Good evening.
Oh, yes.
Why on a show of time? Good evening, welcome to this meeting of the planning committee. I am councillor Michael Lilly, Chair of the Planning Committee, and I'll be chairing this meeting. To begin the meeting, there are a few matters of housekeeping. Action in the event of emergency. There are no practice alarms planned for this evening, so if an alarm does sound, please evacuate the town hall by going down the main staircase or the back staircase to the high street and then to the car park behind the town hall in St Ronwell Street. This meeting is being livestreamed to the council's YouTube page and will be available after the meeting. Please, with speakers, use microphones at all times and speak directly into the microphone. And would participants please mute microphones when not speaking? Excuse me. Introductions. Members of the committee and officers will now introduce themselves, starting from my left.
Good evening, everyone. Lyn Barton, Shrub End Ward.
Sam McLean, Newtown and Christchurch.
Mike Brooks and Anderson St John.
Councillor Jeremy Hagan, Stanway Ward substituting for councillor Davidson.
Good evening, everybody. Councillor Roger Mannion for Tiptree.
Councillor Jackie McLean for Mark Stanley Ward.
Martin Warrens, Bea Church Ward.
Councillor Sam McCarthy representing Shrub End Ward.
Lee Tate for Pretty Gate Ward.
John Miles, Principal Planning Officer.
And Simon Gans, Joint head of planning.
Robert Carmichael, Democratic Services Officer. And Chair, we have with us Matthew Tiller from Essex County Council Highways Department on Zoom.
Welcome, Matt. Members of the committee may use electronic devices to access their meeting papers, and visitors are welcome to use mobile phones and other devices, including cameras. Please use them discreetly, set them to silent, and do not use voice or camera flash functions. We will have a break after the completion at 7.30pm or at an appropriate time. There are toilets on every floor in the building and an induction loop in this room. Whilst determination of a planning application is not a quasi judicial process, unlike certain licensing functions carried out by the local authority, it is a formal administrative process involving the application of national and local policies, reference to legislation and case law, as well as rules of procedure, rights of appeal, and an expectation that people will act reasonably and fairly. All involved in these decisions should remember that the possibility that a grief party may seek a judicial review and/or complain to the ombudsman on grounds of maladministration or a breach of the authorities' code. Substitutes with her today, councillor Hagan for councillor Davidson. Welcome, Jeremy. Declarations of interest. Councillor McCarthy.
Yep, non-registerable. I called in item 7.2, so I won't be voting on the item, but I do wish to speak on it.
So notice, so you can just move down that side, because one is ready to go. Thank you. Anybody else? No urgent items? There are no urgent items? Have your say. If anyone has a petition they wish to present to me on any of the items on the agenda this evening, please do so now. Minutes. Members, excuse me. Members have before them the draft minutes for the meeting held on the 7th September. Any points of accuracy you wish to bring up? No? Can I have a proposal and second to please? For them to be permitted, proposal councillor Tate and councillor Barton, the second to. All those in favour except for meaningless?
I agree.
Thank you. Now, we have two items on the agenda, but 7.1. I should now refer to Robert to explain why we're not going to hear it.
Thank you, Chair. As members will note from earlier in the week, information was circulated both to the committee and to the applicant and to the wider public as much as we could to inform them that application 7.1 would not be heard tonight. That is because there has been a holding objection which has been received from National Highways, which was after the publication of the agenda, and as such will require further assessment of the application. So was subsequently withdrawn by officers and will not be heard tonight and will be returning at a later committee.
Thank you, Robert. That's very disappointing, to be honest. But we are where we are. So we'll now move on to the item that's left, item 7.2, and that's the land front in Gosbech View in Colchester. It's recommended for approval. Presented, obviously, will be John Miles. We have two speakers, sorry, four speakers. Public speaker against is Richard Rayner. Public four is Molly Foley. Then we have councillors, councillor Sam McCarthy and county councillor, councillor Dave Harris. So I'll now move over to John to present the application, please, John.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everyone. So item 7.2 is an application for nine dwellings at land front in Gosbech View, Colchester. The application is before members, as has been called in by councillor Sam McCarthy, on highway safety grounds. As raised earlier, we do have Matt Tiller in attendance from ECC Highways this evening. So if there are any specific queries on highways matters following the presentation, they can hopefully be answered by Matt then. I'll now go through the plans. This is the location plan, site edged red. It's important to note that the site forms part of the residential allocation land at Gosbech's Phase Two under policy SC1 of the Section Two Local Plan. The wider allocation is identified in red on the image on the screen now. The application site is to the top left of the screen. Members will note the green strip beyond the east of the site, and this forms part of the scheduled monument known as Gosbech's Iron Age and Roman O British Sites. I'll come back to that in a moment. Contextually, there is existing residential development to the north and to the south. The existing and under-construction developments to the south includes the Gosbech's Road-Bloor Homes development, which also forms part of the SC1 allocation seen in red. Permission was granted in 2020 for 144 dwellings on this site here to the south. In terms of the wider context, there's existing commercial development to the east, including a Lidl supermarket quite close proximity to the site. This is the proposed site plan, which outlines the proposed dwellings. As outlined, there's a total of nine dwellings proposed, a mix of two, three and four bedroom houses and bungalows with associated private amenity space and parking. The proposal also includes the addition of two new passing places along Gosbech's View, seen here to the right of the screen and closer towards the middle. A new size three turning head is also proposed within the site, and it's understood that, under adopted highway standards, such a turning head is suitable to serve larger vehicles, including fire rescue tenders. There's also a proposed condition to secure improvements to the existing bell mouth where Gosbech's View meets Gosbech's Road to the east. There's a minimum of two off-road parking spaces per dwelling, and including policy-compliant garaging, a majority of the dwellings are served by three off-road parking spaces, and the provision of suitable cycle parking facilities are recommended to be controlled by condition. It's worth noting that the layout and detailed design of the dwellings have undergone several revisions since first submitted, and one of the areas where revisions has to be made includes the layout of the scheme. Amendments have been made to ensure that there are dwellings which front onto the aforementioned scheduled monument beyond the east of the site, and this is in response to comments raised from Historic England Statutory Consultants. So for a bit of context, the scheduled monument site to the east is understood to originally have contained a Roman road which ran north-east to south-west. It's the approximate line seen down here in red. And as with the Bloor's Home site to the south, it's therefore considered desirable to ensure that the dwellings adjacent to the scheduled monument face onto the monuments and so to the line of the old Roman road. And this is coupled with a new interpretation panel proposed on-site and to be secured by condition, which is anticipated to assist in the public's ability to interpret and appreciate the scheduled monument and its significance. Let's go on to some of the house types. This is plots one and two. The dwellings adopt traditional forms and materiality. This property in particular facing brick and slate and includes a number of welcome design features. This is one of the two-storey dwellings, again, traditional in form and detailing. Let's go through the house types quite quickly. This is effectively the corner plot, which looks to front both Cannoblin Way and the scheduled monument. Two-story dwelling. And these are the remaining bungalows. So you can see, officers consider that the dwellings are pleasantly designed, and in addition to the detailed design features already included, condition four is worded in such a manner as to secure additional detailing to plot seven and nine in the form of exposed raft feats to plot seven and additional brickwork detailing to plot nine to further enhance the site character. And this is just the proposed garaging. And I'll go through some site photos. This is a view from the south-west of the site, looking east across the site. It's a view of Cannoblin Way, and you can see, you can just about make out the Bloor's Home development, which I mentioned earlier in the distance. Another view across the site, existing residential dwellings to the north, seen here. Other dwellings to the north beyond the site. Site on the left, a view down Cannoblin Way, the Bloor's Home development again. View towards the more commercial area beyond the east of the site, the Lidl scene there. And this is a view of the access where Gosbech's View meets Gosbech's Road, which is proposed to serve the development site. It's another view of the access onto Gosbech's Road, looking east. This is a view across the part of the allocation which isn't part of the application site, but is what was previously shown in red, which is to the east of that grass area. This is a view from a long Gosbech's View, looking east towards the access with Gosbech's Road. This is a view further along here, and it's worth noting that approximately opposite this existing drive, which serves residential dwellings on the left, this is the proposed location of the first passing bay on the right here. A view a bit further along, and this is on the right between the two trees. You can see, this is the approximate proposed location of the second passing bay along Gosbech's View. It's another view looking east along Gosbech's View. To the right here is the approximate location of the proposed new size three turning head. If you're looking west, you can just about see the pedestrian access through to Gladiator Way, and then on the left, that's pedestrian access through to Cannoblin Way. Existing residential properties also seen, which are served by Gosbech's View. It's a bit of a clearer view of that link through to Gladiator Way and a clearer view of that pedestrian link through to Cannoblin Way. Again, it's another view along Gosbech's View, looking east, application site seen right. You can't really see much into the site at the moment from this angle, given there's an existing bund and it's become quite overgrown with blackberry rambles. Again, another view towards the site. View along Gosbech's View, Cannoblin Way, the roundabout. And a view from the, beyond the south-west of the site, looking at where the pedestrian access joins Gosbech's View and Cannoblin Way. So to summarise, in conclusion, the application proposes nine dwellings on an allocated and sustainably located site within the settlement boundary of Colchester. While the development will change the character of the site itself, it's considered the proposal as before members and subject to conditions outlined will integrate successfully with the surrounding area, including in terms of the scheme's relationship with heritage assets and the existing landscape. Issues of highway safety and access have been carefully considered and taken into account the works proposed, including a new passing base and turning head. Subject to the conditions outlined, the proposed development is considered acceptable for both the highway safety and highway capacity perspective. Taken as a whole, the officers consider that the proposed development represents sustainable and policy-compliant development, and the recommendation put forward is therefore one of approval. Thank you. I'd be more than happy to take questions after tonight's speakers. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And now go to the public speakers. So, public speaker against, Richard Rayner, please. You have three minutes to speak. The bell will go after two, Lyn, you have a minute left. It will start when you press the red button, ready to go. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. Hope you can hear me. I don't know if any of you have viewed it before or been there. Quick, show of hands if you have. If you have, that's good. You'll no doubt be aware of the nature of the lane, and you'll see the access and safety issues that the development introduces that I'm going to go through. So the lane is considered a public walkway. The roadway itself has no drainage and floods regularly. The whole width of the lane is used by pedestrians when they are walking up and down. Any increase in traffic puts these pedestrians and cyclists, if they're there, in danger of the single-lane traffic. The road itself is very narrow. There's no footpath on the road. It means there's nowhere to stand to avoid the oncoming traffic. You have to be on the road. And despite the revisions that the plan has had, it doesn't seem to address this issue. It's not just about the residents. It's a common highway issue. Many of non-residents have objected to this. They use the lane regularly, and they've objected to the proposal on these grounds. And with regards to the access issues, the plots make use of tandem parking spaces, and the proposed parking spaces are directly outside of the properties. So this means they're almost certainly going to be used as a parking convenience, so you don't have to manoeuvre the cars by the residents and visitors. And there's been ample evidence from other developments that people disregard the site's intended purpose for this convenience. Also means that if the cars are parked in the parking base, there'll be no way the oncoming traffic can pass. They'll have to reverse up or down the lane, which can be quite dangerous coming onto the main road or back up westways. This presents a dangerous pedestrians and other residents' cars that are already there, their property, perhaps the surrounding environment might get destroyed as well. Might be a good idea to move the spaces so they don't align directly with the properties, don't become associated with them, maybe some 24-hour restrictions that are enforceable. Regarding plots eight and nine, the access to the driveways is very narrow, so when they're occupied, it'd be likely impossible to reverse out of a fully occupied driveway. You'd have to reverse fully before you could turn. This isn't the width to do it. And the problem would be more significant because existing residents of Gosbech's View have already planned a sliding gateway to prevent unauthorised access to their shared driveway, as is right. This will severely limit manoeuvrability for the new residents, considering the width of the road, as I just mentioned, is not wide enough. Removal of these two plots would ease this, or certainly at least one, and move access to the main road instead of the side of development. Given this difficulty, it cannot be ignored as well that refugee and emergency services would simply not be able to navigate the lane. It's even observed that the developer couldn't navigate out easily in their vehicle. Finders environmental concerns, there's no lighting there, which makes navigating, reversing dangerous to pedestrians. I believe it's left unlit to protect wildlife and put in lighting in would contradict that. And speaking of wildlife, there has been badger sightings there. This should be looked at. So the residents appreciate the need for, sorry.
Thank you. That was your three minutes. And three of us made the site visit today. Councillors Hall, Barton and myself, along with John Miles and Robert Carmichael. And now we go on to speakers four. Molly Foley, please. Same rules for you. You have three minutes. The bell will go after two, you have a minute left after that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, councillors. Firstly, I would like to address the highway concerns leading to the call-in of this application. Vaughan and Blyth undertook a pre-application with the Highways Authority to ensure that any proposal would meet the necessary requirements. In accordance with the highway standards, the parking for each dwelling has been designed to ensure all vehicles can enter onto Gosbech's Road in a forward gear. This is a formal requirement for all proposed developments to prioritise highway safety. This scheme provides a five-and-a-half metre wide turning head adjoining Gosbech's View, which will improve the turning of emergency and refuse vehicles. The Essex County Fire and Rescue Service have raised no objection. The three passing bays cannot be used as additional parking, as this would block the off-road parking for plots one to three. A new pedestrian crossing to the bell mouth where Gosbech's View meets Gosbech's Road can be secured by the proposed condition 25. Ultimately, the Highways Authority at Essex County Council have raised no objection on the basis of the proposal as presented this evening, along with the suggested conditions would protect the safety of pedestrians and other vehicles. Vaughan and Blyth have worked collaboratively with the council to achieve a positive sympathetic design for nine dwellings on a site allocated by the authority for further housing. Most notably, the renowned local building company have provided bespoke designs along the frontage of the Schedule Ancient Monument to the east. For example, plot four provides a dual aspect over both Cannoblin Way and the heritage asset, with details such as an oak-framed porch, stone heads and sills, and cottage-style casement windows. The level of architectural detailing which can be added at this site far exceeds the surrounding Gosbech's developments. This design approach ensures that all three sides of the site have active frontages, as well as guaranteeing the history of the Roman road is reflected in the pattern of development. In addition, Vaughan and Blyth will commission an interpretation panel in collaboration with the Colchester Archaeological Trust and Colchester Museums. This will ensure that the active participation of pedestrians learning about the history of this part of Colchester in a location which today has merely been a liminal space. In terms of landscaping, the vast majority of the existing trees are to remain, and invasive bramble species are to be removed. A native Hawthorn hedgerow will be planted to all boundaries, along with additional tree planting throughout the site and bird and bat boxes. Our ecologist has calculated that these measures alongside off-site contributions can produce a biodiversity net gain of 10%. If the development is approved, financial contributions have also been secured to enhance the local community facilities and sports and recreation grounds to a sum in excess of £80,000. While we acknowledge the concerns raised by the local residents in respect to highway safety, I trust the detailed information submitted to the council and deemed acceptable by the county council can assure that all relevant measures have been taken to ensure no harm arises from the development. To echo the presentation delivered by the council, it can be concluded that the proposal is policy compliant in all aspects. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me move on. Excuse me. Let me move on to councillor Sam McCarthy, one of the ward councils.
Thank you very much, Chair. Do you want me to sit here or would you like me to go to the end?
I think that it'd be best if you speak to the public speaker, otherwise people might think you're still part of the committee. And you know the school, Sam.
Thank you very much, Chair. It feels a bit strange sitting this side of the committee. I called this in due to the fact that I had never received such an overwhelming concern from an application before, within hours of it going live on the CCC website. When I called the application in, I quoted verbatim the objection comments made to me and those already registered under the application. Foolishly, on my part, this suggests that I've predetermined, when actually I hadn't, and I'm not sure at this stage if I have either. Even with new information, I only wish to voice a few major concerns, which I really hope you share too. This area has changed quite considerably over the last five years or so. The neighbouring Bloor Homes development has been an overwhelming success, with most residents being first-time buyers, young families, and from conversations had, predominantly Colcestrian. Crucially, access to this estate is from the roundabout Cannoblin Way and Gosbech's Road. This particular development, with the plan being to develop the western half of land, means that access from one of the roundabouts is more or less impossible. Thus, the tiny country road of Gosbech's View has been proposed as the access point. The road itself, as I hope, well, obviously three of you saw on your visit this afternoon, the photos shown actually are tastefully done to make the road look wider. It's not. It's a narrow lane, popular with walkers, ramblers and so on, heading towards the archaeological park. Note that there isn't a footpath, something some fellow members may be more used to in their rural wards, but not something that could or should facilitate another nine dwelling. Most of them, we can safely say, will have two, if not three, vehicles. The passing bays, let's be frank, will likely be taken up by parked vehicles, whether that be visitors or indeed people driving to Gosbech's. Equally, those bays will contribute to the removal of some trees. As it stands, a few dwellings already use Gosbech's View for access, dwellings from neighbouring Roman fields. It is these residents who obviously and rightly have the most concern. Interestingly, the concern isn't particularly about the proposed nine dwellings. That isn't overly my concern either. It is the access. These residents know firsthand just how difficult it is along this little lane when it comes to passing pedestrians, waste collections and vehicles meeting, et cetera. Don't forget, this will be a building site, and God only knows how construction vehicles plan on moving freely. It will be hellish. If this isn't enough, hang on a sec. If this isn't enough, no new footpath is proposed. These are family homes. There will be a considerable increase in people that need to walk down Gosbech's View. This includes children, pushchairs and the like. This may include elderly, those with mobility issues. A footpath is absolutely essential, which makes this lane even narrower. Do you see my point here? It's impossible. Unless we're wanting these residents to drive to the nearby Lidl, which is a stone's throw away, it doesn't make sense. I know we mustn't use other applications for reference, but just think about what we do as a committee. Think about the members that sit in this chair and plead with us when it comes to these little country roads being used to lead on developments and multiple family homes. We can and must do better when it comes to highways, even if we aren't the council responsible for them. I respect highways, and I'm really pleased they're here tonight. My question for them is, did they visit the site ahead of giving feedback on this application? My plea to my colleagues is to seriously consider the highways implications here. Can we look to have a second access point or stop Gosbech's View being used and find an alternative? It's unfortunate that the eastern side cannot be developed. Freeing up a potential route from Gosbech's Road or roundabout is looking unlikely. I accept that we need homes, and I do want more homes, and I'm happy for them to be in Shrub End. I absolutely love having new people in the area. I just want it done right, and I want it done safely. Colleagues will know that I'm not a fan of deferrals, but I seriously think it may be logical tonight, as this is the application's maiden visit to the committee. Tease it out, get the access right, and let's go from there. Otherwise, if there's no room to manoeuvre, quite literally, this mustn't go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. I think you need to take a seat in the public ones, or you could go. There's always a choice, you never know. Some people have parish council meetings. And county councillor David Harris. And you know the school, Dave?
I do, Chair, and thank you very much for receiving me politely, as always, Chair. Thank you very much, and to the committee as well. I have five minutes. I'll try not to use all the five minutes, but I don't want to repeat a lot of what's already been said, because Richard very clearly said about the aspect of the lane and the fact that it's only 11 foot wide, and eloquently councillor Sam McCarthy said the same thing. For me, I had a June meeting with some of the residents, I'm sorry, 15, 16, 17, 18 residents and I met and talked about that. They were incredulous, Chair, that the fact, not that we're having a development here, but the way the access was not being dealt with in the realm of what was to be happening with the new build. There are options there that I think I would certainly encourage defer and to go back and think of those. The access further at the western end that comes towards Temple and Canal London Way and Gladiator, thought could be given about access and near and Gladiator, thought could be given about accessing nearer that way rather than using the old lane that's traditionally there. And nobody's mentioned yet Chair, I have to say, the electric substation that's halfway along there, you would have seen that today, quite a large site, it gets a lot of visits from big heavy vehicles that go in and out there and maintain quite rightly our electric supply. And that would obviously be another factor that needs to be thought of, thought through. I stand by the objections I put in at the very start, that I put on the website, there's been no allowance for public to walk on the public footpath, as has already been said, without having to dodge cars coming through, it's not safe, there's no due regard for that. There's no lighting obviously and there wouldn't be, it doesn't make amendments to, or no amendments seem to have been taken account of the fact that people will be using that backwards and forwards now. Richard made a very, the public speaker for the residents, made a very good point about the passing laybys being parked in and the applicant quite rightly said, well they're for the people to pass by, they've got access to their drives. Well don't forget, the people who go in one in three, plots one and three, will park their cars and if a visitor comes there, where are they going to put their car? Right in that layby, there's nothing to stop them. They're only blocking their friend's car in plots one to three, so think about that for a second. It needs to be thought through more carefully and I would ask the committee respectfully, if you could think about deferring this and give us some more thought about this. It may be there's two or three houses too much on this site to actually design it in a way that fits everybody, but it's got to be done for safety. Children using that site, as has been said, backwards and forwards to school, et cetera, and to the local Lidl shop, which I shop in myself, it's a lovely shop, good staff, et cetera, it's not appropriate, other shops still exist in the area of course, the Co-op, et cetera. But for me, rethink please, and the highways have visited the sites, I know they have because I've been in conversation with them over the last few months and they've told me they have, and every time I've suggested an alternative, they've given me the standard and they would do, wouldn't they, the standard rules about highway applications. But for me, more than access here, you have to model this application on what's there, not what the rules say about it. You have to think about the residents, how they will gel in the future. And one final point I would make, coming out of one of the plots at the western end, if you come out of the actual lane there, I think Richard said this, you cannot physically get out of that drive of the new house without going into the property of an adjacent drive facing them. Now that's wrong, that's got to be rethought, isn't it? There's either too many houses in the plot and needs to come back and scale down or rethink about the size, but you can't let that happen, using somebody else's drive to get in there. Was that my five or was that four?
Obviously four.
Thank you very much. So I'll finish off by saying, please committee, I respectfully ask for a rethink, there is good time to think about deferring this and going back to the drawing board, talk to all concerned, perhaps involve a couple of the residents, a couple of the residents are very articulate about what they want and what they can work with and how they can make sure it's safer for everybody. So I'd urge that to happen in a productive way, which I'm sure will bear fruit. Don't impose this tonight please, ladies and gentlemen, if you can find it in your heart to protect this site for future. Once it's done, it's done, let's take time and consider what is right for that resident and the new residents who have to live with it as well as the old ones. Thank you very much Mr. Chair.
Thank you. An awful lot of points raised by the residents and by both councillors, so would you like to respond to all the points made there, John please?
Thank you Chair, yes, I'll put it in the order that I'll respond to matters that aren't highways matters and then we can pass over to Matt after a summary of my consideration of highways matters. So one of the issues raised was surface water flooding, the site is considered to be at low risk from flooding, the landscaping condition also includes a provision for permeable surfaces and treating surface water runoff. Wildlife, potential wildlife impacts were raised, a preliminary ecological appraisal has been submitted in support of the application reviewed by Place Services, who are content that with the mitigation proposed, there won't be any unacceptable impacts on ecology and as outlined, it's considered biodiversity net gain can be secured by condition. Moving on to the main issue, highways matters and highway safety, yeah, it's recognised and fully appreciated that the proposal will increase vehicle movements along Gosbecks View, but it is also recognised that the proposal does include those new passing places, the turning heads and improvements to the bell mouth where Gosbecks View meets Gosbecks Road. And in officers' opinion, it's not considered that, it's considered that with this mitigation that there won't be unacceptable impacts on highway safety. I think it is important to note that it's not anticipated that the development will fundamentally alter the character or vehicle movements along Gosbecks View, it is anticipated that Gosbecks View will remain lightly trafficked and that vehicles would likely be travelling at low speeds. The scheme is also considered to deliver some benefits from an access and highways perspective, specifically that proposed new size three turning head, which is understood will improve the situation in terms of the ability of say a fire tender to turn in that area. I think further notwithstanding that, it is noted as well that Gosbecks View is not a public right of way, I fully appreciate it is used by pedestrians, notwithstanding it's considered will remain relatively lightly trafficked, vehicles at low speeds. It is also important tonight that there is a footway along Cannobelin Way to the south which effectively runs nearly parallel with Gosbecks View and that is also easily accessible from Gladiator Way, so through those pedestrian access points I showed in the photos earlier on. I'll pass over to Matt now, who hopefully will be able to provide some more information on their consideration ultimately of potential highway impacts and also where sort of those discussions of the access went and ultimately why the access is proposed via Gosbecks View. Thank you.
Actually John, I think we're going to take the ward councillor, councillor Barton first.
Apologies, yeah.
And we'll call in Matt.
Thank you Chair.
Councillor Barton, thank you John.
Thank you very much Chair. Start on a couple of positives, I've got no problem with the design of the site and also recognise that it is an allocated site, so we are where we are with that. But it is entrance on a very narrow entry lane, which is why I asked if the committee could have a site visit, so everybody could see just how narrow that lane is, and it really is narrow. And obviously this application will generate significantly more traffic, whatever said, we're talking nine properties here with two cars per property, I would expect, and nine more properties is pretty significant in that setting. So having gone this afternoon, I can't understand why we have to have Gosbecks View as the entrance. We had a good look around the site and I can't understand why we can't have an entrance from Cannobelin Way, which would sort all the problems out easily. Now, we were told by the officer that obviously there's speeding traffic along there, it leads to the roundabout, it's quite busy, but as councillor Lily suggested, why can't we have a left turn only out of that estate? And then that leads immediately to the roundabout and the same could apply coming the other way, that you can't turn in with a right turn, you've got to go to the next roundabout. And they're very close to the proposed entrance that I'm suggesting. So I would like to hear from highways, why we can't have the entrance in a more sensible place. Thank you.
Thank you. And now on to Matt on Zoom, please Matt.
No problem, okay. All the roads in the county are under a hierarchy of use and the Cannobelin Way would be...
A second, we've got a, are we seeing Matt as well as?
He keeps putting his camera on.
Could you put your camera on please Matt, so we can see?
I thought it was on.
So it makes it a bit more human.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I'm staring at me with a different voice coming out.
Okay.
I can't see the beast again over there.
Is the camera on now?
The joys of modern technology.
It says it's on here unfortunately.
Okay fair enough, we'll have to crack on as you are here.
Sorry about that. But it'd be a fun, oh, hang on, maybe over there. Have I appeared?
Yeah, you...
Yep.
There you are, welcome.
Here I am.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. So the function of Cannobelin Way would be to, as a traffic carrier, a significant traffic carrier, and access from those roads is not permitted, it's under a policy that's not to permit. So any new access would be from the lower category of road, which in this case is Gosbecks View. Where the site is located, the layby is the natural location for an access and we wouldn't want to see the loss of that layby either, to be honest. That's the answer to that, why you can't have it on Cannobelin Way. There's volume of traffic and the function of the road. A left in and probably a right out, left and right out on top of Gosbecks View. I don't think there's enough room to get a left lane in, a left turn in there and to come out at top of Gosbecks Road. That wasn't discussed at prayer.
Okay, so if it's not allowed, you are the highways authority.
Yep.
Could you sort of charge yourself to change that layout? Though you can see where we're coming from, because a little tiny lane is going to cause a lot of problems in the future, there's no doubt about that and there'll be the residents who suffer down there. But if an access was to come out, it's quite a short piece of road to the junction of the roundabout.
Yeah.
And as the highways authority, you could change your licence or your authority and the way of the road, or even to look at it. I think that we'd like you to look into it to see if it's possible to do that and then we can go back and talk about the lane. So is it possible for you to take a look to see if it is possible to come out there?
There is always a possibility to look at alternatives. My best guess at the moment though is there wouldn't be enough space across the site frontage to Cannobelin Way to get a left turn in from there, but we certainly look at any proposal.
Okay, thank you. Get back to the lane that's proposed.
Yep.
Are there any plans, a lot of problems will be solved here if double yellow lines were placed down that road, a traffic regulation order in the future to stop people parking on there, I know there's not much, but it's enough to stop people parking if a house down there has a party and people turn up, that they will park down that road, that causes problems and double yellow lines will go somewhere to stop there. Have you considered a TRO being put in there?
I couldn't do it through the planning process, I couldn't recommend it as part of the planning process, because it's not guaranteed it would be accepted by the highway I wouldn't expect on such a low category of road, unless there were extenuating circumstances, i.e. significant obstruction or danger hazards, additional hazards, that that would be considered. But it's certainly something we could ask the parking partnership if they would be considered to put it, if it would fit their policies and get double yellows or red lines as they have done throughout other areas in the county.
Well, red line would be perfect actually down there, but it seems that the situation is like we are with the rest of our in Colchester, we have to wait for people to have the houses occupied, for them to cause the obstructions.
Yes.
And then we have to apply for a TRO and then another four years later, we are where we are. But I don't know, do you have any questions for Matt? Councillor McClyne please.
On the photos that we've just seen, displayed, the track is only single lane anyway, so how the, how would you actually get all these vehicles going backwards and forwards? You have potentially maybe 20 or 30 car movements. And this is not with the other houses that are already there. The lane is not fit for purpose, the lane is, if you look on the satellite at the moment with the weather we've had, it's flooded. You'll be going down the side of the road, you'll be eroding the road, you'll be going into all the green swarms and all the rest of it, you'll then go into the ditch and everything else and all you're going to do is compact the situation, it's a mess. And it's not fit for purpose in my book. I mean, you know, how many other houses are down there that have all got two or three cars? So, and if you've got no two-way traffic, that's just unfair because you cannot have all passing points down there every time of the day. And if it's a school run, you know, it's going to be carnage. They're all going to drive to school because there isn't a bus stop just there. So, you know, I just, I can't support this as it is at the moment, I think highways has, you know, a big issue here.
Thank you. Councillor Haygden please.
Thank you Chair, I just want to congratulate the developers, you found some green space in Colchester, so well done to you guys. Just a few points to pick up on actually, and this goes for Matt in highways, potentially John in planning at CCC as well. Visitor parking, we always have this problem, we know there are issues with visitor parking, the guide says we've designed something that's going to tick all the boxes, except when your mum comes around and can't park the car, or it does park the car and then blocks the road. This design is questionable due to the width of the, I call it a road, it's more of a wide footpath really, isn't it? I remember sitting in this committee not so long ago when the portfolio holder for waste, Termaner said that they had restricted Colchester City Council waste collection vehicles from going down a lane very similar width. So how is it supposed, this design, this development, supposed to deliver on the commitments for waste collection under a statutory provision, but also the new contractual service for the garden waste collections coming forward? Lighting infrastructure, there isn't any. Would you want your kids walking down there on a dark night? Not mine, no thank you. And these are supposed to be family dwellings, so I'm surprised that Essex Highways hasn't instructed new lighting to be put down that lane, road, I don't want to call it a road, it's not a road. Sanctuary for pedestrians, we've been continuously hearing tonight about how cars are safe. Well, what about the pedestrians using that pathway? How are they going to be safe if a car's coming the other way, maybe a little bit too fast? I'm not seeing any provisions there for, it slows the speed of vehicles down, perhaps you're not going to see a young child at night, I think the developers and Essex Highways need to look at that. The turning head, it joins onto a private road, whether or not the turning head is adequate, that's down to Essex County Council highways to make that decision on, I'm not an expert on that, but I would have thought that you probably need a bit more space with some of the larger vehicles that may try and squeeze down that lane. The other question I was going to ask, and I'm not sure if this goes to highways or to CCC, LTM 120, how does that comply with the cycling infrastructure guide where it says 1423, the MPPF paragraph 91 sets the overall requirement that planning policies should aim to achieve healthy, inclusive, here's a kicker, and safe places, not seeing this one, and that it can be achieved by promoting social interaction and healthy lifestyles through the layouts and easy connections, see there, catch there, and encouraging walking and cycling. Where's the walking infrastructure? Where's the cycling infrastructure? I'm not going to support this, unless it's a deferral, I'm going to vote to object. Thank you.
John or Matt, do you want to answer the questions, councillor Haygden before? We'll go with John first.
Thanks, yeah, if I start, then anything I miss or find any position to elaborate on further, hopefully Matt can come in. In terms of access by larger vehicles, Essex Fire and Rescue have been consulted and confirmed that they have no objections to the access arrangements, I appreciate that's not a refuse tender, but I would expect that to be a similar size. And in terms of manoeuvring requirements, what I may do to discuss the next point, if I just reshare my screen for some context. If members were particularly concerned about connectivity and pedestrian access, what we could look at and it would require... what we could look at, and it would require further discussions with the applicant and ECC highways to check that they're happy, we could look to improve permeability and pedestrian access by, if you can see my cursor to the south of the site here, we could potentially look to have a new connection through to Cannoblen Way. And Cannoblen Way, my understanding, I believe there is lighting along there, so that could be accessed Gladiator Way, and then that provide a through route through to Cannoblen Way. In terms of light and safety, there is a consideration that any lighting scheme would need to be sensitive to wildlife, including bats. I wonder whether there is a possibility there could be some low-level lighting incorporated along that turning head, and that was currently shown as a private drive to provide a lit and safer access route, which would then link up with Cannoblen Way. That if members felt strongly about that, I'm sure that's something we could certainly discuss with the developer, and hopefully that would assist in ensuring that connectivity in that area is retained and if not, enhanced through that new connection. I think that's all the points I can address. I'll hand over to Matt if he has anything to add. Thank you.
Regarding your last point, John, with the connection through from that private drive, there doesn't seem to be any reason why that could not be engineered into the scheme.
Okay. And lighting?
I would need to take advice from our street lighting colleagues.
Okay, councillor Hagan?
I just want to come back on one point and thank officers for their replies there. There seems to be a lot of, well, we could go back to the drawing board and have a look at this. So I really think there's a proposal here to defer this to a future meeting. But I just wanted to ask one question. It's relating to the private drive. By virtue of it being privately owned, it wouldn't be under the Maintenance Agreement of Essex Highways, it wouldn't be adopted. If you put a footpath through there, who's to say that at some point in the future, you're not going to put gates up if you own the properties perhaps, trying maybe to stem antisocial behaviour? We don't know. If you're not enough lights, you're not going to see anything. And actually, this is a big consideration. And you said there might be bats there, you know, what's saying that we're going to disturb the wildlife that's on there? Maybe we need another look at this and, you know, seriously consider this as a development when there are other sites in Colchester in the local plan agreed that actually maybe should come forward first. But that's not what we're deciding here, we're deciding this plan. So I'm going to propose that we defer this until the comments have been addressed and discussed, and perhaps those changes have been thought about. Thank you.
Okay, we've got a proposal for deferral. Just got to clarify which comments that you make, just for the records, Jeremy, I get it, but if you can name them, please.
Okay, so we're looking at lighting specifically, LTN 120 on the safety aspect, making sure that pedestrians have sanctuary as well as cyclists and then cars. Not demonising the vehicle, but it's got to be a shed, we've got to do the right thing. We do it everywhere else in this city. We've got to make sure we do it right. Every development should be done right. So they're the three areas that I would defer it on to. To look at the access to this whole development, I don't know why we can't look at the development and say, do you know what, we could actually double the width of Gosbech's view. It's going to cost a bit of money. Sorry, it's going to cost money. But actually, if you did that, make it two-way, you could make this quite a welcoming, you know, development. I think, you know, the designs of the houses actually look quite nice. I'm quite impressed with them, to be fair. But actually, we need to think clever. And also, I'm not seeing any facilities for the kids. I don't know if that falls within the remit of a nine-dwelling development, but certainly I'm not seeing any from there for the kiddies to go and play on. Something else to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Shaun, we've got those conditions, if I could. So we have a proposal for deferral, just got to do this first, and defer some of the conditions. Is there a second for deferral? Councillor Walmsley's up first. He's second for that.
Chair, could I add something to the deferral before we vote on it?
Go on then, and then I'll take Simon.
Well, I'd like access to be part of it, because if it isn't, when it comes back, we won't be allowed to discuss access because it wasn't on the original deferral. So I'd like access, even though you're saying you can't do anything about it, I don't see why not. So could we add access, please?
Okay, we can do that, and then before we go to the vote, we'll finalize the conditions, and then we'll move on to Simon, please.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, in connection with the matter that councillor Barton and councillor Hagan raised, particularly on with regard to access, can we also ask the highway authority to look at the possibility of a left-hand turning lane as well, in addition to potentially increasing the width of the existing pedestrian lane? Thank you.
Councillor Ty.
I just wanted to clarify if the deferral option with regard to the, you have to excuse me, the, I can't think what the word you used, safety of pedestrians, basically, if that would include any provision for the people to put in a footpath potentially? It's like, as councillor Barton said, I wouldn't want to take that off the table if it meant we couldn't discuss it next time round.
I could bring, I think councillor Hagan's point about a two-way lane would be ideal there, and footpath could be put in with lights, and it'd be ideal of that, it was a good idea. Councillor Walmsley? Sorry, I beg your pardon, Martin, councillor Mannion is actually first.
Thank you, Chair. I'm sorry, but all I'm hearing tonight is platitudes. We hear from highways like traffic. Well, actually, 18 new vehicles on the standard rules of you're going to have in that development, 18 vehicles moving three or four times a day, shall we say three times a day? You know, there's 30, 50-odd movements down a very, very narrowly lane. Then it's proposed there'll be slow speed, will they? How are they going to be stopped? How are they going to make them go slowly? I don't know. And then we have the situation where emergency services have given approval. No, they haven't. What they have done is agreed conditionally, and those conditions are subject to the design rules and the planning rules this council sets up. So it's not approved, so let's not play games with words. And I have to say, I would suggest to get a fire tender down that lane in an emergency with possible vehicles parked in the laybys would probably be an absolute nightmare. And the reality is, they would probably park on the main road and then have the trumps across the development. So I don't think this is fit for purpose under any rules. I mean, it just doesn't work, and as my colleagues have said, I won't be able to support it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Walmsley?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, it is, it's the safety here, which I think my colleague councillor Harris was correct to actually raise with us. As this lane stands, I'm looking at it on Google Maps, and you can see the contours of it. And having been born and bred in a rural area and regularly used roads that didn't have footpaths, you would rely on there being a flat refuge space that you could step onto or step up onto in order to get out of the way of oncoming vehicles. And when you look at this particular lane, a lot of the roads are sloped. So as it stands, it just isn't safe because to expect a pedestrian to try and take refuge from a vehicle on a verge that is sloped is really, is inviting an accident to happen. So I think the deferral is correct. We need to go back to the drawing board, we need to have a proper look at this and see whether we can put the safety of people on foot using this lane as well as people using cars. I respect there is a footway that comes from Gladiator Way and goes out on to Cannoblen Way. But as we know, with many, many areas, people take the desired route, not necessarily the route that is provided. And if it's quicker to walk down that lane to get to where you want to go to, it might well be Lidl's, it might well be, you know, a convenience store, people are not going to walk around Cannoblen Way, they're going to walk down the lane. So therefore, you've got to address in a practical way the safety of them doing so. So that's my views, and I'm seconded, and I will support a deferral of this application.
Okay, so I think we're ready to move on to councillor Hagan's deferral vote. Before we do that, can we just have a recap on the conditions? And if councillor Hagan is happy with those conditions? So we'll just hear those first. Maybe add a couple if we want to, but we'll see. Robert?
Thank you, Chair. So what I've recorded so far would be that the proposal on the table is proposed and seconded, which we need to check with poster and secretary in a minute, is that the application is deferred and that authority is delegated to the head of planning to seek amendments for the following. Lighting, that lighting is reviewed in conjunction with LTN 120 with regard to safety for pedestrians and cyclists. The second point would be for access, and this would be to investigate a double width, the doubling of the width of Gosbech's view or widening of the road. And the second sub-paragraph on to that with regards to access would be to ask highways to look into a possible left-hand turning lane that would come off of Cannoblen Way. I don't, I'd just like to check if that's possible with Mr Cairns to see if that is an acceptable point.
Simon, are those acceptable for a deferral?
Yes, that's absolutely clear, Chair. Thank you.
So to the secondary proposal, are you happy with those conditions? Do you wish to change anything?
As long as a pathway, a footway, is mentioned, because as councillor Barton says, we won't be able to come back to it later if we don't specify now.
Robert?
Thank you, Chair. Apologies, councillor Walmsley, on that point. Then I will add with regards to the access point, and that a pathway with regards to access would be, would to be reviewed as well, if that's acceptable.
Thank you. My question was asked, where is the nearest bus stop down there, do you know?
I don't, off the top of my head, I'm afraid.
Shrub End Road there, because there's a big primary school there as well, so people would rather walk there, wouldn't they? So, okay, so let's get back to the conditions. What's going, top of a, excuse me. Secondary proposal, are you happy the condition is imposed?
I think so. I just want to make sure that the pathway is subject to the compliance of LTN 120 because that's what we are pushing across the city, and we have to think what the city's going to be in the next 50 to 100 years. So I'd like to see that, and I know there are some widths on there that need to be addressed. Thank you.
I think it should be a standard footpath that could cope with a wheelchair or a buggy as well, so. I'm ready to go to the vote then.
I know.
Go on then.
No, I have got one more point. I don't know how relevant it is at the moment, but the 106 money allocated to Leisure World, when it's Shrub End residents that are going to be affected by this development, I strongly, I'm strongly against. We want all the money spent on Shrub End to improve facility for our residents. Is that relevant to sort of add that, or would that come later when it comes back to committee, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Can we suggest we explore that with our colleagues in service provision areas and bring that back to you for considerations part of the deferral?
And I believe that the all councillors would like some of the money to be spent on the War Memorial, that's been proposed up there as well, which would be a good community event, I believe, and money well spent. So colleagues, we've now heard tonight that we have a proposal on the table for deferral with all the conditions attached, and we're now never going to get to the vote. Over to Robert.
I'm sorry, Chair, it's just more formality to make sure that we've captured it. So just to confirm that the proposal and second are happy with the point regards to the section 106, so that we capture everything.
I think that it's important, I will accept that.
I'm happy also.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Robert. Well pointed, good point, my mate. Now, we are ready to move to the vote. All those in favour of deferral with all the conditions attached, just raise your hands, and that's unanimous.
You're unanimous, Chair.
So that now means the meetings concur for tonight. Thanks, everybody, for turning up. I believe it was a good discussion and a good decision well made by everyone. Thanks for coming.